Oh, thank you. You want to say they laugh?
Yeah.
Alright, hang on. I gotta put my slippers on.
Yeah, mommy bob.
Yeah, you don't have a shirt on. Hello.
Am I muted?
Yeah, that's true.
Should have the podcast almost done, by the way.
Oh, yeah, awesome.
Yeah, I've been working on it. It's all synced up. It looks good. The sound came out great. I'm gonna add some features like map overlay. When you talked about the maps.
Yeah.
And some of the trial, the trail links are gonna go in it. So that would be kinda cool.
Has it been a lot of work?
Um, it was just tricky getting the sync up at first. Between the audio and the video. There's two audios, so I took one audio out off the camera. And then I did the, um, did the actual mic, cause it's a deeper, it's better, it's clearer.
Yeah.
And it sounds really good, so can't wait to, uh, get this thing out here, cause we're, we're recording other stuff too. We wanna like throwing things out, so.
What else have you recorded?
Um, we're doing a, um, a mask. You know, thing. Coronavirus and of course, we're doing our biggest one that we're working on right now that we wanna get out immediately is with it, cause we wanna like launch these all.
Yeah.
Um, is about the presidential race. We want, you know, we wanna talk about, you know, certain people not being hypocrites, that kinda thing, and everybody needs to, you know, kinda like what we talked about before.
You brush your teeth?
No.
TV's probably too loud.
Come back. Bye. Come back after you brush your teeth.
Let me, uh, keep myself.
Bye. It doesn't start for another 10 minutes, though.
So I just wanna bring up tonight, if that's okay to post when it's ready.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It'll be ready, just, you know, this weekend easily. So it's like I said, I've been pulling the maps up. So that way I can overlay, so the video will kinda, we'll be talking still and then you'll see, like, you'll say about the interactive maps and then the map comes up. You know, and I wanna put the, the link, you know, so that people see it. I learned from this podcast, like, we, we're, we're putting in a timer.
Okay.
Because we noticed for like, well, we're too long.
Yeah, so are you gonna like cut a bunch of stuff or what?
No, I didn't cut anything. And I'm just gonna call, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, well, yeah, I mean, I cut a few things out, you know, from the, from the time thing, but I'm like, well, I want this to be more like 30 minutes or 20 minutes or 30 minutes, I said, but I'm gonna call this the extended version. And that's so people know that, hey, this is just an extended version of our podcast because it's so cool about the trails, so.
How long?
Huh? Like 42?
Okay.
Um, it's behind this. I was working on it. What is it? Um, what is it here? It is 4333. Is what it, what it came out to be. That's with cutting, that's without cutting anything but what we, what, uh, you know, that where we had that little break where we had a process. And that was it.
I remember that, yeah, cause it like it stopped or something.
Yes, so that was, that was the only thing that I had to cut out. And then I had to sync that up until that was a separate sync. The, the camera kept going, so I had to take the, the sound and I had to bet, you know,
Oh, yeah.
Get the sound and then get it to sync up to where we started again, so. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it was fun though. I can't wait to do more of these, so.
Okay, so the, the ones that you're doing next, or is it just you and?
Yes, yeah, for now. And then we do, you know, then, the reason behind that too is we wanted to get some conversations going.
Yeah.
And then kinda like blast them out real quick. Um, so that we get a few out in different platforms. And then this way, we can see if we can get some people to kinda, I don't know, do this with us to say, hey, see, this is what we're doing.
That's cool.
So you just kinda blindly trusted us and said, yeah, I'll come down. But I think that's kinda cool because you helped legitimize what we're trying to do too.
Um, I think it should be fine as long as she doesn't touch the computer.
Nah, it's all good.
There you go.
That's your secretary for the night.
Yeah, you gonna take good notes?
No answer.
She doesn't like strangers, so. Funny same thing.
Don't worry, there'll be a lot more strangers popping up on this stream soon.
Usually when she gets like nervous around strangers, she just like, she gets really quiet and then she just takes her finger and sticks it up her nose.
Yeah, it's funny, you know, uh, Libby in church on Sunday, one of the girls came over and, and, you know, just was trying to, you know, hey, how you doing? And it was the first time I seen Libby, you know, because she's a baby, she's six months old now. Actually like shy away, like, you know, like playful shy. You know, she buried, you know, she put her, you know, just like threw her head in my, my, my chest, you know? So that was the first time I've, I've ever seen that. So she's developing a personality now. She's starting to, you know, cause she can recognize all of us now, like she recognizes.
When was she born? Was it?
May 7th.
Okay. So she's quarantine.
Yep. Yep, I had all ledger, all ledger celebrated with me. I posted the picture and said, well, we couldn't go to the hospital because it was right at the height.
Hey, did you just put something in your mouth? No.
So that's, uh, that was tough, but, uh.
Yeah, I just had the map of, um, the like travel advisory.
Yeah.
Advisory list, there's like 46 states.
Yep. Gonna be a small Thanksgiving. Just gonna have my, my immediate telling my cousins and everybody, not this year.
People come over?
Yeah, it's like the one holiday, I actually have my cousins come. They, they live out in like Cheshire. You know, and sometimes my uncle will come and, um, you know, you start getting everybody together. My nieces will come and I'm not, not this year. I'm, I'm gonna be a little safer.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna be responsible.
Hello.
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 How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I'm gonna mute myself so I don't make noise for everybody unless I'm talking, right? Cause I got the TV on.
Alright, that's good. I have to like admit people one by one when they come up. Hi, Roberta.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
New member with us? Do I see a new member, Megan?
I don't know what it is, but.
Hello.
Hi, Mary. Joan's going through a phase where she like doesn't wanna be separated.
What is her name?
This is Joan.
Joan. Hi, Joan.
Yeah, she'll be two in January.
Ah.
Crazy, it's coming fast. Don't, I, I feel a little bad, cause I don't really remember most of it, so.
Does she like to watch video?
Uh, she doesn't, she doesn't really like, she doesn't watch really very much. But this is interesting though, cause I mean, she, she's not ever around other people, so not like, not like we're with other people, but I don't think she really knows it to think right now.
What this is all about. A first Zoom conference.
Yeah, right.
I wonder when she's our age, what he'll be doing.
Very different.
Can't even imagine, Mary.
Hey, everyone.
Hey, Hillary.
Hey, Hillary.
Hi, Hillary.
Hillary, I'm pretty sure the last meeting that you led was like 30 minutes.
It was, and I, uh, hope to beat that record tonight.
I'm good.
That is my plan.
Yeah, I, um, I already got changed in my pajamas and I was like, oh, we have a meeting.
Yeah, that's about how today went.
You mean there'll be nobody around when Michael checks in, right?
What was he doing tonight? Parks and Rec?
No, inland wetlands.
Oh, okay.
Uh, over the, I guess on the Bog Bridge, it's going over wetlands and probably needed a permit. Did anybody say they were not attending?
I only saw that Michael was coming late. I don't think anybody else mentioned anything.
Okay. And are you down two members or one member?
I know we're down Joanne and, uh, Jeff had said something yesterday about a second, but I don't know who that would be.
Oh, um, Gary, you said something. Didn't you say that?
I did.
Well, and Tracy too, right?
Oh, did she quit?
Yes, that's what, yes, that's what it was.
Oh, okay.
Yep, she, she didn't re, um, she didn't wanna be reappointed, I guess.
Okay. So that would be who the second person was then?
Yeah.
I think we have quorum, so we can go ahead and get started if you guys want, and then if anybody joins, that's fine, or we can wait a couple of minutes. It doesn't matter to me.
Uh, who else is here just so for the roll call? I see Mary, uh, Megan, myself, Hillary, uh, Roberta, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Gary, I see you. Molly. Carmen. Okay, so Molly is not on yet?
I don't see her now.
Okay, I'm just gonna put absent for right this second and then I'll go in and fix it later if, if it, if that works.
And Mike will be late.
Yep. Okay. Just have to, have to bear with me a little bit, cause I've got my computer open. I'm trying to do the meeting on the phone because last time I did a virtual meeting and took minutes, it was very difficult for me, so.
Just let me know, Eddie, no rush.
Okay, I am ready.
Awesome. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is 6:46. And we did the roll call, so we won't do that again. Um, we don't have the October minutes, so we're not gonna be reviewing the minutes this month. Um, so we are on a correspondence. And, um, did you guys get the correspondence in the email? Um, we have the Land Conservation Council. It's their annual membership. And, uh, we do that every year, right, Roberta?
Yes, we just don't, uh, of the two things Mike mentioned, we pay one a full amount and the other one, we only pay half the amount.
Um, okay, it looks like this one, they're looking for organizational membership. Um, it says like other 100, 150, 250 or more. Do you know how much we do?
I, I don't have last year's figures in front of me, but that one we pay. The other one, we usually, um, they ask for a thousand, I think, and we don't pay that, we pay 500.
Okay.
So if we just vote to, uh, continue membership in those two organizations, then I can get a PO for them.
Okay, do we want to, uh, vote to move that under new business then? Discuss that? Does anyone have a, a motion? To, uh, discuss these two memberships under new business?
What, what are the two, what are the two memberships?
It's the Eastern Conservation, oh, uh, yes, the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District Membership that Roberta said we normally do 500 instead of a thousand. And then there is the Land Conservate, the Connecticut Land Conservation Council. And, um, they are asking for anywhere from 100 to 250.
Okay, thank you.
Um, did I see also in the email that Mike sent that Avalonia was also asking for donation?
We do. I'll get to that next. I just wanted to get this on new business if we wanted to vote on this tonight, and then I can go over the rest of the correspondence.
Okay.
Alright.
Hey, Molly.
Everyone. Megan, I like your helper.
So did anybody wanna make that motion to, uh, go over those two memberships that we do every year?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Okay, any second?
All seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll discuss these two under new business. And then we had a request from Avalonia. And, um, they were asking for support, um, for a donation. I'm trying to see how much they're asking for. They're saying a hundred dollars or even more, so a minimum of a hundred. Um, and if we want to add that to new business to discuss tonight.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we discuss the Avalonia request for a donation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone to post? Alright. Let me find my agenda again. I have way too much paperwork in front of me tonight. Alright, so that's, uh, all the correspondence. Do we have any public comments tonight?
Who's, who seconded the motion for Avalonia?
I did.
Molly.
Okay, thank you.
And it doesn't look like we have any extra people here tonight, so we'll, uh, move on to informational items, and I don't have any informational items. Um, so we're on old business. Um, has anyone done any property walks in the last month?
I have not.
Alright.
I've been walking, walking, but not, the Pequot Trail is nothing to do with us, so that's, that's what I've been walking.
Um, what about trail blazes at LCC Maintain Trails? Do we have any new information on that tonight? Any new blazes?
I was gonna do them on my vacation, but I didn't, I think the weather, I didn't, we didn't get the paint or something.
Yeah, I still have the templates that, um, Mike said he was gonna grab for me, but we haven't, we haven't done that yet.
If.
To go those? Go ahead, Molly.
I was just gonna.
Are those templates still in good condition?
They are still in good condition. Um, there is, the only thing is that there's like paint on them that like has dried, but the template's still like, you know, working, you can still use them.
They're, they're usable still.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I would just make another set if we needed them. That's all.
Where are those supplies kept?
Whoever uses them last.
Yeah.
Alright.
If a member felt like moved to contribute to that, you would just email the group and say, who has the stuff? I might go out this weekend and then, okay. Thank you.
Do we have any new information at the signage of Burton Trail?
Um, so I've passed that project on to Mike. Um, he has everything, uh, he said for every reason, last time it went into his spam folder. Um, but he has all the information now, so he's taking on that project.
Alright, so we will wait till he shows up our next month to discuss that. We can move right along. Um, the hike ledger program.
Hike ledger. So you guys saw the logos that I sent out, um, the three options, the one with the like striped colored background and the one with the, the tree with the blue border and the tree with the yellow border. Um, and it seemed like, I think most, I think everyone, most everyone responded, um, um, and it seems like everyone, I don't know, I seem like everybody liked all of them.
So it, were the votes rather even between one and two?
Um, let me check real quick. I don't think I, I voted over email, but, uh, if we're discussing it right now, I like the first one. What was the first one?
With the blue border?
I like the first one too. No, I don't know, I like, like two, I get, I think two and then one were my favorites.
I really like the.
Well, the yellow kinda was like, I like the blue border, but then I thought the yellow had that ledger feel. I, I don't know, so.
The yellow one?
They're all good.
I thought it stood out a little better with the yellow background. I think it kinda just made things pop a little more.
Yellow border?
The yellow border.
Yeah.
The yellow, the one with the yellow border.
Uh, right after our last meeting, I received a letter from the Ledged Fire Department asking for a donation. And their patch has that yellow gold look border.
Oh, does it?
I wondered if keeping a similar border on a town patch would be appropriate.
Hmm. Here, here, um, here are my thoughts. I was thinking maybe keeping both the yellow border one and the stripe background since they're, they're both done and just having both of those as options and letting people choose whatever one they want. Kind of my thought. Maybe, or like maybe using the yellow, the one with the yellow border as like the main one, and then the like striped border is one that I think, like my kids like that, it'd be more fun, maybe attract like a younger crowd or a different crowd, so. So I don't know, I, I think I, I kinda like they did, maybe use like the yellow one, one with the yellow border for like, you know, the main part of the program, but then, um, you know, to go on like the materials that talk about it, but then in like the, the shop have, you know, the alternative option. That's kinda my thought so far.
I can see kids liking better the ones with, uh, multiple colors. And then adults maybe liking one of the other two.
Does it cost us more to have two?
No, no, it's all, you know, all the work is done. So he said, you know, the, the, um, so we can have, you know, like, we can use all of, all of them if we wanted to.
Do you get a better price when you order more of the same thing?
Um, so, so we just paid him for the design work and I wasn't, well, I guess there's, there's two things. So I was just planning on having people like pay for their own memorabilia. Um, but I, after this meeting, I do plan on meeting with Scott Johnson, the director of Parks and Rec. And he, at first he was like, you know, we don't have a lot of funds, it's tight, but then when I saw him a few weeks ago, he was like, um, you know, we might, we might be able to help out with something, and so I'm kind of wondering if maybe like everybody that registers can like pick up a sticker, um, just at the Parks and Rec office, and maybe like Parks and Recs can, you know, pay for the stickers or something, which is fairly negligible, but that's kinda my thoughts so far.
So rather than make a full decision tonight, should we just go till the next meeting? Until after you've talked to Scott?
Um, he, he wanted to wait until like after we made a decision, like talk about it, um, more and, and like, you know, how they could help support us, so. I guess. My instinct is nice.
Okay.
It'd be nice to have all this, there's one patch. But, um, but I'm open to either way. I don't have strong feelings about it. It seemed like most of us liked one or two, so that maybe the yellow border is a good consensus one. Alright.
I think it'll, I think it'll be more recognized if we only have one.
Yeah, that's kinda my thought. And not use the striped one? I didn't, I didn't see anybody speaking for that one. As their favorite, but maybe, um, I don't know if everybody had a chance. Yeah. That's true. Um, if, I mean, if, if we wanna do just one, I would do just the yellow border one. The striped one is more for like, I was thinking if, like I said, for, for kids, um, I don't know, it just, it has a different feel, but I can, I can see having one, having this one. And what, what, what does everyone else think on one versus two? Just one, keep it simple? I, I think, um, if you wanna have the one with the yellow, yellow border be like the main one, like if we're gonna go and order a bunch of stickers or something that's like pre-made, then just have the one, that's, that's what is available. And then if, and then if people are ordering their own things for hike ledger, then you know, they can have choice one or the rain, the striped background.
The other thing to think about is if we're doing this, this year for 2021, we could have the gold edge, and then if we did it again, since we've already paid for the samples, we could do the rainbow one a second year. And we've already, we've already got the whole thing created, so.
It'd be like a special year, like if we trying to think if we have any anniversaries coming up, that would be our centennial, does Ledger have any like significant years coming up or, I feel like we just had a big.
Not that I know of.
When were we founded?
1836. We got a little ways to go.
Yeah, to go, yeah. Okay, well.
Or save it for the end of COVID. That can be our.
Oh, my God, then everything turns green. Yeah, that's, I'll be more in a mood for the, like, the stripy colorful background. Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think for now, you know, I, I'm liking the idea, I'll stick with the one patch, the yellow patch, and then the yellow border patch, and then, um, you know, keep the other one for when we might need it later. And then, you know, keep the other one for when we might need it later. I'm good with that. Alright, cool. Thanks, everyone. So I'll, I'll meet with.
Do we have to vote on that or is that, is that all good?
Yeah, I, I don't know if we need to. I, I don't know. I feel like, like we already, I don't know.
Mary, do we need to vote on that? I don't. Yeah, I don't think we have to vote on that. So the next thing on here is off-leash trails and I don't know how much thought any of you have given to that. I personally would like to table that until Mike, Mike's here for that discussion. I know he's done a lot of that, so.
I concur.
Okay, so we're gonna move along. The construction of Bog Bridge at Burton Trail. And I know that he sent some estimates and actually I need to pull those up. Does anyone have those available?
Fifteen fifty. One thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, and I know he said he had another quote for something that was way too expensive, so. Do you happen to know how much we have in our budget, Roberta?
I do. Did anybody? Did Mike send out to the rest of you last month's? Thing I sent him? No.
I don't think I got it, no.
Give me three minutes to find it, okay?
Hillary, I have the estimate up. Do you want me to share it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh no, I can't.
Alright, I'll have to enable screen sharing for next time.
I know it's a one hundred and twenty foot bog bridge.
Yeah, I've got it pulled up right now. It says fifteen fifty, including, yeah, the labor and the material and everything.
And the name of the company is I Got A Guy LLC. Is what it's called.
Where did he find him?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Mike said he thought it was reasonable. I've never commissioned a bog bridge to be built, so I don't have a sense, I'm afraid.
I feel like when we were looking at writing a grant for a bog bridge in. Maybe it was in Burton, I'm not, I don't remember anymore. It was around, it was around that like twelve hundred, thirteen hundred dollar range, I think. So I feel like at first I said to myself, oh, that seems high. But then when I was thinking about the grant that we wrote a few years ago, I think that's pretty in line.
Yeah, I remember the same, that it was around like twelve hundred dollars.
About that. Fifty dollars an hour seems reasonable for that kind of work. That's what I would expect to pay a contractor and. For that long, a bog bridge, eight fifty does seem reasonable for materials.
Yeah, especially. Like lumber is outrageous right now.
Well, it's gonna take them just hours to get all the lumber in there.
And that's why the labor is so high is they're gonna actually have to schlep it in.
I apologize, I cannot find last month's thing from Masha Hancock. But I, the only thing I got financial this month was the seven hundred dollar bill for creating the patches. And I do remember we had sufficient funds in the trail.
It, it shouldn't have been a seven hundred dollar bill. It was like a four hundred and fifty dollar bill for the patch.
Well, the, the total amount that was sent to him was seven hundred. Was part paid before?
Paid before? No. No. I'll have to check with him because he said it was just four fifty.
Okay. I'm pretty sure that it was more than that that went out.
We came back to him and asked him to modify it. Could that have affected it?
He's, he said that that was part of the process. So I would just be surprised if he had said one thing and then it was another, so.
Right, right.
That was more than we like allotted for, so.
Yeah, I only know that I had to go back with his bill because he wasn't an approved vendor at the time. And so we had to fill out paperwork to become an approved vendor. To pay the bill.
What's our process? I feel like I haven't been on the commission when we've done this yet, but for things like this bog bridge. Do we have an established process? Like are we supposed to get competitive bids or are we just supposed to use our judgment?
Well, usually if it's over, I think a certain amount of money, you're supposed to get competitive bids. And then if nobody bids on it, you know, or maybe you just have one, you can usually go with that and you get a bid waiver. And do you know what that amount is, Mary? I'm gonna say three or fourth, uh, three thousand, five thousand maybe. That would be under that, but it doesn't hell, it doesn't hurt to get, you know, competitive bids.
Then in the email that he sent, he mentioned he had an estimate from somebody else too.
Oh, well, okay, okay.
And it was quite high compared.
That was for Whitehall.
But it's not the same thing. He was, he was doing brush hogging at Whitehall. And this is, you know, building a bridge.
I mean, I guess my feeling is if we already sort of know all the people who might do this and we have an established relationship. Like this is somebody we usually use, then I'm comfortable going forward. If we're sort of, this is the first time we've done this in a while. I think I'd be more comfortable soliciting at least a few bids and then, if there's no, if it's not time sensitive.
I think this is the second or third person Mike has talked to.
Yeah, this has been going off for a little while that he's been trying to get this.
Okay, so if we've had trouble getting a bid, then, and this seems reasonable, then let's move forward. Alright, do we need a motion?
Do, does anyone wanna make a motion?
I move, we move forward with this bid, provided there is, we have the funds to do it.
I second that.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. And do we have any more old business to come before the commission tonight? Alright, so moving along to new business. And there was nothing under there. We were gonna talk about the things in correspondence. But before we get started with that, does anyone have any new business they wanna add tonight? Okay.
Yeah, actually, can I, can I ask, should I ask that question there? This is part of hike ledger. So I'll make this announcement in the new business before we hit new business thing. I did a podcast with Megan. About the hike ledger program and the things that the Ledger Conservation Commission is doing. And I just wanted to let you guys know and I plan on posting this podcast. Out for everybody and I just wanted to make sure that was cool with everybody here. I mean, that's just something that I'm doing, but it has to do with that and I wanted to give my fellow members a heads up on that. I thought it was pretty cool. I mean, right, Megan, we had some, a fun conversation.
That's awesome.
That sounds fun. Where are you gonna post it so that we can go look at it?
Well, I wanted to post it on, you know, the, the Facebook sites, possibly Ledger Conservation Commission site. If that was okay with you guys, the hike led, hike ledger. Page, right? And, you know, there'll be a couple other spots will be on. For people to, you know, there'll be just audio, but there is video with it too. And then the video, I'm, I'm interlaying some of the. You know, it's, it's a longer conversation. We had a, we were talking a lot of those trails, but, you know, I'm gonna be integrating it with like, when she talks about the maps. And, and everything else where you can see all that and, you know, just, just, I don't know, it's just, it was kinda neat and fun to do, so.
Gary, do you have like a, a podcast channel or a platform that?
We have multiple channels and I'll, I can get all that and email that to you guys too.
That would be great.
Alright, so moving along to new business, I know what we talked about. It's three different groups that want donations right now. And I know there are groups that we normally support every year and we did just vote fifteen hundred to do a bog bridge. So I kinda wanna see what our budget is before we make those decisions, if that's okay with everybody. So is everyone okay with tabling that until next month? Okay, I'm sorry. I just feel, I, I don't wanna vote without looking at it. Does anyone else have anything tonight?
Is there any conversation supposed to go on about that wildlife assessment at Whitehall? Mike included it in his note, but then he didn't actually say were we to do anything with it.
So I had mentioned earlier, I thought we discussed that with him later, because he did say it was pretty high, right? If I'm remembering correctly. So I, you know, wanted, since he's not here, I thought we should kinda wait to discuss that with him.
Roberta, I think that the assessment was brought up in the context of, we, we were starting the conversation about whether any areas should be designated as off-leash areas. Raised the question of, well, do any of these areas we're considering have like species of concern? Or are there impacts we should be considering? And he was, he dug up, he said, oh, he thought he remembered there's this assessment and he dug it up for us to review.
Two oh, two, two thousand and two, right?
So I think since we already decided to put the dog area forwards when Mike's here, I think that's, we should think of that. Context for that conversation.
So I, I guess because of that, considering how long ago it was. It'll be almost twenty years, right? If it was done in two thousand and two. Maybe that's something that we have to look at. If an area we're going to have off-leash, that we have something more up to date and recent. I'm just raising that issue that it might be worth looking at that piece that he said is in our file. He commented that what he sent to us were just pieces out of the assessment that was done in two thousand and two. And if we're gonna give serious thought to that being an off-leash area. I don't think we should do that on a report that's twenty years old.
More broadly, I think it's a great idea for Ledger to have a sense of what it's got, you know?
On its own property.
Why was that assessment done way back when? What was the purpose of it then?
I don't think he said, but I think it was a piece of. When the property was first donated and we were made the trust of it. That accompanied it, that that was something that was supposed to be done.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's just, I, if I'm reading into his. Context, but I think that that came up when we were looking at Whitehall to find out about who was farming on it. And he did all the research on what was in the file about Whitehall and how the trust came about. And I think some kind of assessment was done. Based on us having to take care of the property appropriately. Or something like that. And I'm guessing out of my head that might not remember it correctly.
Definitely think we should be discussing this on, when Mike's here. This way we can get a full sense.
And it sounds like he has that information, so, yeah. So we'll, I'll make a note that we can ask him about that next month and.
Well, he said the information's in the file. He did, he didn't say he had a copy of it, but he might, but he said for everybody to, had a chance to read it. They would find it in the file.
Any other new business? Alright, you guys, I think we're ready to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
So moved, it's a record.
Any second? All in favor of adjourning? Anyone opposed? Alright, you guys have a great evening.
Hillary in charge is timing from now on.
Happy Thanksgiving to you all.
See you guys next month.
Good night.
Good night.